Dr. Walks Harper, I noticed you have, oh, the attendees are growing. Okay.
Yes, that's what I'm waiting.
There's only two. Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to just wait a couple of minutes while the attendees drop into the meeting. Thank you so much for being here.
Buenas tardes, todos gracias por asistir. Solamente estamos esperando unos momentos mientras entran a los personas que están atendiendo la junta.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome and thanks so much for being here. I'm going to ask Melissa if she'll share some information regarding translation.
Buenas tardes, todos bienvenidos. Gracias por participar. Si necesitan interpretación pueden ir al icono abajo que dice interpretación, seleccione el lenguaje de español y también la sección que dice New Original Audio. Entonces después de eso vas a estar en el canal español. Gracias.
Thank you and welcome again. Welcome to our second week of school. We're so glad you're able to join us this afternoon. My name is Kristana Walks Harper. I'm the Administrative Director for People and Community Services. And we'll start with our Board President, Mrs. Adrian Coniger-Macklin. Thank you so much for joining us. You're on mute.
Great. Good afternoon. It is such a pleasure to be with you all today and welcome back to another year of growth and learning within PUSD. Even though we're virtual, we still have our PUSD family intact and education and learning is going on. So we thank you all for helping us with that and for this being a team effort. So welcome back and we hope to provide some exciting and memorable events this year on the education front that'll keep you inspired. Thank you, Dr. Harts Walker.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Coniger-Macklin. And then our Board Member, Dr. Roberta Prohman. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. First of all, just welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us today. I just want to ask that we're all patient together as we kind of work through this. It's new for all of us. And I know for some of the children, well, for most of the children or students, it's a challenge and it's a challenge for our families. So we absolutely understand that and you just let us know how we can support you. That's the students, our families, our community, any way that we can help, we're here. And so just contact us and we'll be here to help you. So I don't want you to think you're in this alone. We're all in this together, working as a family until we do the best we can under the circumstance until we're back to school. So welcome again, everyone. Thank you for everyone who puts these town halls together. They're critical for our community. So and I look forward to future meetings with you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Prohman. And now to our Superintendent, Mr. Richard Martinez.
Dr. Walks Harper, thank you. And Board Members, we appreciate your presence here at these meetings. It's very important that we're all listening to our community. You know, I got this new monitor. It's not my new monitor. I just have a monitor. I'm not sure what to look at. So you see my eyes kind of going back and forth. I'm not sure which where the camera is. But again, I like to share with you, week one, for being a virtual week and the first time we've ever done distance learning, from my vantage point and from others, because I did see something on the patch. And I know I don't, I try to stay away from social media, but in the patch, there was somewhat of a negative comment that it started with. But then I saw what the parents wrote and what I saw, students, parents and teachers. And I would say of the 260 that were up there, the little comments that were made, I would say about 245 to 250 were very positive. And people were saying, we did really well for year one in a distance learning environment. And so I commend you parents because this is a partnership. I know it's heavy lifting by our parents because if you have a K1, 2, 3 student, to keep them focused and to keep them on, I know that's pretty incredible. But you might want to start something. I'll remind you once again, I said it a couple of times, a couple of weeks back, is when we get started with school, we should dress up for school. And so, you know, if they could dress up ready to learn that uniform, even if it means instead of being barefoot, put your tennis shoes on, put some, to get your pajamas off and get your clothes, school clothes on, so that way they have the mindset and they're prepped to learn. So I'm excited about what you're doing because you are committing and sacrificing a lot of your time for those primaries. Also those upper graders, I know some don't want to stay on. So I look forward to hearing those stories from our students and how challenging this has been. And there's some silver linings to all of this because some of this virtual pieces, we'll probably keep in professional development some of this because it really allows for more time to be on our campuses, more time to do other things so that we're not commuting from a school site to a district office. So we've learned some and we want to maintain some of that as well. So again, welcome and happy new year, once again, Dr. Walks Harper.
Thank you, sir. We also have our Public Information Officer, Mr. Oliver Yanaka. If you'd like to share a few words with us, sir?
Hello, parents. It's really an honor to be here. I look back on the number of meetings that we've had and it feels like a lifetime ago. We've gone through so much in such a short period of time. And I'm just so very pleased that our outreach and engagement to you has been effective, to the point that Mr. Martinez made with regards to the commentary and the feedback that we're getting online. We read it all. We appreciate any and all input that you provide. And it's our honor to continue to be here for you. So while we mentioned that this is one of the last ones, we are still very much here, open, accessible and ready to hear any and all that you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yanaka. So this afternoon, we have for you a couple of different teams that are here to support you. We have our technology team and you might say, well, you had technology last week. Well, we have technology again today because we want to make sure that we are connected. We are connected in terms of having the town hall meetings, but that we're connected on the internet, that our students have the support, that you as parents have the support. Some of you, we know, picked up your devices even over the weekend. We've had the drive-through available here at the district office. And so we want to make sure that we wrap up the technology. And if, again, you continue to have questions as we go throughout this process, tomorrow morning, the Chromebook may not turn on. I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but I want you to know that we want you to reach out to your schools right away. We do have on the website, and I'm going to ask our staff to share that with you again, where the help ticket information is for technology. This is an ongoing experience and we want to make sure that you stay connected. Let your child's teacher know, let your principal know, let us know at the district office because we want to make sure that the connections are ongoing, the hotspots and Chromebooks are working, the apps that you need access to. This is an ongoing work for us with you to support you. So please continue to let us know. We have our teams, as I shared from EdTech. We have Michael Dyer, we have Sabrina Jordan Ortega and Ellen Palmer. They're going to go back over many of the items that some of you have seen and some of you who are new, joining us today, may not have seen. But again, we want to make sure it's clear. In addition, we have Dr. Mark Mayne and Jody Ruby from our Health Services. And we wanted to have an opportunity to give you some real-time updates in terms of health and wellness today. So those are our two presentation teams. Please continue to put any questions that you have in the Q and A. We have a team from our community schools that are working the Q and A and sending those questions to me. And so we will address those as well today. So at this time, I'm going to again ask Melissa quickly if you would share regarding the translation, in case anyone came on who might need that support.
Buenas tardes. Si necesitan traducción o interpretación en español, pueden ir al icono abajo que dice interpretación y de ahí seleccione el lenguaje de español y también seleccione New Original Audio para que nos escuche los dos canales. Gracias.
Thank you so much. And just as we get ready to get started, we have Mrs. Lilia Fuentes, our Assistant Superintendent for Ed Services. If you'd like to share a few words.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us today. You know, it's really exciting when our parents join us and, you know, take the information. And, you know, if you can help us by sharing the information, we would be very grateful. So have a great day and I'll turn it back to Dr. Harper.
Thank you so much. So now we'll start with our Educational Technology Team.
Good afternoon. What we're going to share today, Mr. Yanaka just put in the chat with our Family Tech Guide, the distance learning website that we have. So we've created this Family Tech Guide for you in English and in Spanish. You can find this on the Family Distance website that is in the chat. So today, what we're going to do is go through just some of the things in troubleshooting. We know after the first week of school and then continuing this week, that those would be some of the things that we really need to go through for the troubleshooting. So what we're going to do is get you to the website. So Mr. Yanaka put that in for you. And if you go ahead and click there, so we'll go to the, in the tech guide, we'll go to slide. I'm going to come down here into the slides. And so this is the slide in Slide 35 for the Distance Family Learning. So if we click on that and then you can click on your computer, Mr. Yanaka put in the chat, this is our Distance Learning for Families. And so as you can see, we have the Family Tech Guides that are in Spanish and in English for you. And so these can help you. It has all the different resources that we've included for troubleshooting, anything that parents and students might need to help you through this distance learning phase that we're going through. But we're going to kind of go through a couple of things. The optional insurance being one, we want to make sure that here in the optional insurance, that the optional insurance isn't open for the whole year. It's only good for that first 30 days when the students have received their computers. So we want to make sure that all of you as parents know that there is a time limit to purchasing that optional insurance. So we want to make sure that you guys go ahead and get that optional insurance if you have, in case anything happens to the device. So we're also going to talk about technology troubleshooting. And so we're going to talk about the Student Tech Guide. So this is for students and for parents. And here, the past couple of tech Q and As that we've had with parents logging in and students is switching the camera. And so right here, you'll be able to see that there are videos that help you with the camera. So if you're looking at the website, you would click here where you can kind of see Kermit's face. On our Chromebooks, they have two cameras. One is the camera that you look into and then the camera, world-facing camera, which is down on the bottom on the left-hand side. So a lot of times what students are finding, if they have it in their case, the strap that has, that it has it holding in, so it has that camera on and so they think that their camera's not working. It just shows a black screen. So what we've had to do is walk students and parents through this. And this is just a quick video and guide for you that you can use on switching that camera. So basically, it's an app which is on the Chromebook and it's just going in and just like on a cell phone, you can switch, you know, if you want to take selfie mode or if you want to take a picture, something in front of you. So the Chromebook has an app in it, just like you would on your phone. And then the other is that we want to really point out is right here, which is our split screen on Chromebooks. So a lot of times when students are using the Chromebooks, they're zooming and they may also need to open up their Chrome website, their operating system, so that they can do two things at once. They can pay attention within the Zoom meeting and also do something that a teacher might have given them. And so this video shows everyone, students and parents, how they're able to do that. And here for the Zoom trouble, if underneath you click here where it is for the kids, then it also has those troubleshoots with Zoom. Though a lot of times, students don't have their name on and they're not logged into their Google account. So when this happens, teachers usually won't let students in. So they haven't authenticated. And so in the settings what teachers use is that authentication. So if it just shows up like somebody's first name or a phone number or their student ID number, the teachers won't let them in. So here is just a quick troubleshooting guide on how to go through and do that in the app on your Chromebook with your students. So we just wanted to make sure that, that parents are aware of this. If they're having troubles and they're saying that their teacher won't let them in the classroom, that could be one of the issues is that their name's not popping up. So the teachers have been instructed not to let people that they don't know in and they're not authenticated. These are some of the few things for troubleshooting and that you can look at on our website. Again, the Distance Learning for Families website that it takes you to has all kinds of resources for you and your students. So you want to make sure that you bookmark this page and make sure that you can go back to it. If you have any questions or anything like that, our email is on there for PUSD EdTech. Don't hesitate to reach out to us. And then the other thing that we want to show you from the tech guide is Securely. And so on this page, Securely, basically what Securely is, is the app that we have put on. We have to be compliant that these Chromebooks that we're giving you are safe and that will keep students away from websites that they're not supposed to be going to, videos and normally other things. So you as parents are able to also control that with the app. So I know Sabrina is going to talk a little bit with you about the app and Securely. There is a video here that shows you exactly what Securely is. So we want to remind you that as a parent, you can take control of your student's Chromebook. So you can set times for when they can be on it. You can also set times to turn it off. And so when the students aren't using it for school and you don't want them to get on, you're able to lock them out for a certain amount of time. You're also able to bring up all the websites that they've gone to, any searches that they have. So the parents have all this within the Securely app. So we wanted to make sure that you as parents know that you can also have the control in this parent app and that you're able to see everything that your students are doing so that you're making sure that they're safe online. And then the next thing what we're going to do is from here, Sabrina, did you want to talk about the app first or no?
Sure.
Okay.
So just a reminder to parents, we have the app. This is what the screen looks like. You'll search for Securely Home in your App Store. When you find Securely Home, you'll go ahead and install it. The first time you log in, it'll take you to a screen that looks like this. You will have to click the login button there. You don't have to click create an account. But when you do click login, you need to make sure that you use the email that's on file with your students, on your student's Q account, so their parent connect account. If you use a email that's not on file, you will not be able to access the app. So it's very important, again, we've talked about parent connect a lot. If you make sure that the student's information is accurate and complete and the email is very important. Once you have, go ahead and download the app and into your email, you should receive an email from Securely. It tells you that you have a magic link. And once you receive that email, you're able to sign into the app itself. If you don't want to download the app onto your phone, you can also go to the Securely website. It'll allow you the same types of access we're demonstrating here on the app. The app window itself has four areas. They actually added new features here on the bottom right that I just seen today. So I'm kind of excited to show that because we have had a lot of questions from parents recently. So one of the things you'll see is an activity feed. The activity feed will show you multiple students. So I have two students. So they're listed here above and then I can see any activity that they've done today. You're able to set rules. So in case you have an elementary student who's different than a high school student, you want different rules for those two students, you're able to select rules based on this particular student that you choose. That's just a reminder telling you that the schools override your rules during school time. For example, we have had parents ask, can we block YouTube? Yes, you can block YouTube after school hours, so after 3:00 PM, between 8:00 and 3:00. Because some of our teachers do use YouTube's in productive ways to show things like how to do a particular math problem and that kind of thing. We don't block YouTube for teachers. So during the school hours, YouTube would remain unblocked, overriding any restrictions you place on your student account. Now, if you choose as a parent to block YouTube, then after 3:00, school hours are over, then you're able to do so. So just be aware of that. Some of the things that you have control to block are shown here, like if you want to allow web mail or streaming media and that kind of thing. Additionally, there are some things that you'll see grayed out and that's because they're district controlled. If there's a particular website that you would like to block, you can type it in and block it there. So that's something else that you're able to control. You're able to set offline schedules. So if you don't want the students on the internet after 6:00 PM, let's say, you're able to do that. Or create bedtimes for your device as well. And you can do that again per student. So it doesn't have to be for all of your kids. So if some of your kids have in later bedtime than others, you can do it per child as well. And you see here where it allows you to pick a time. So from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, let's say you want to create that as a bedtime, the student's not able to access their Chromebook device and go on to the internet during that time. And again, you can differentiate by day or by weekend. It's all up to the parent. And again, this is all free to the parents to access, whether they do it on the actual website itself or on the app. So again, this information can be found on our tech guide that Mike started off with today or it can also be found on our website, on our EdTech website that we shared on the chat. In addition to that, we wanted parents to be mindful of some things that are coming up. So some things that they might see on their child's Chromebook. One of the things that they might see is NetApp. NetApp allows teachers to see a student's screen while working with the student during class in a live Zoom. So this is very helpful to teachers. One of the ways that we're sharing today, that a lot of our elementary teachers, and again, this can be used as secondary as well, but a lot of our elementary students or students from kindergarten through eighth grade will be taking a foundational placement test for both language arts and math. So because they might be doing that, teachers might be using NetApp and we want the parents to be aware of what that would look like. So you might see a screen like this, "Welcome to Vision." A lot of your students are familiar with it because their teachers used it in the past in the classroom setting and now they're able to do so remotely. What it might ask you to do, or if your child's teacher tells you they're having problems seeing their screen, is sometimes you have to look for this window, which requires a parent or student to click on their name. So once they click on their name, it's going to ask, NetApp's going to ask for permission to use your Google account. And you have to grant that so that the teachers themselves can go ahead and start the class. When a teacher starts the class, this window here on the left will pop up. Students, it's a two-step process. The students need to first click on the window and they'll see a blue frame around it. And then they need to click the blue share button on the bottom right. While they're doing so, the teacher will then be able to do things like monitor their screens. This helps the teacher be able to navigate the student to the right place for where they need them in the class. It also allows the teacher to do things like freeze their screen when they need their attention or when they need them to redirect them to a different website. So NetApp is very beneficial during instruction for teachers, but we wanted parents to be familiar with it in case they see those windows open during a live session. Another thing we wanted parents to be familiar with is helping their students navigate to these tests that we mentioned earlier. So we'll log in with Google. They may see from their clever webpage, they may be directed to go to "Let's Go Learn." So they'll see that icon there on the right. From there, the first time they log in, they can click the red Google login button there on the right. But because it's the first time logging in, there's a couple of extra steps. And again, this will only happen the first time they log in. Again, we see this familiar window, like just with NetApp, they have to select their name. And then once they do so, the very first time they log in, they do have to type in their credentials. So this could be provided by the teacher, but the username is their Google ID or Gmail address. And we've talked about their Google IDs several times during our webinars. It's their first initial, usually. The first four letters of their last name and then their projected graduation year. So with our TKs or AKs, they might see a 33 at the end. In this password, this is where it's a little bit different and where it throws some of our parents off. The password is not the six-digit birthday that they log in with typically, but it's the whole year. So for example, 10, 16, 2016, it would be the whole year and not just the last two digits of the birth year. So I just wanted to point that out. Generally, what we've been seeing is that teachers are sending this information to parents, but we just also wanted parents to be familiar with what it looked like. And then for the school code, they do have to type in Pomona. And again, they'll only have to do so the very first time they log in. And they should see, once they're all logged in, the student's name. So for example, "Welcome, Michael." And then they'll see any assessments that the teacher would like the students. Here on the bottom left, there'll be an assessments tab. They can scroll up and see if they have a language arts or a math assessment that the teacher might be asking them to do. So again, although "Let's Go Learn" is not K-12, we will see the math portion, the Adam test, K-8 in math. But we also might see that NetApp screen in the high school settings as well, as teachers monitor students' screens and activities during live sessions in Zoom. Mike, did you want to add anything else to that?
No. And then I'll just walk them through how, live, how to clear the cache.
Perfect. I'll go ahead and let you control that.
Okay. All right. So last thing that we're going to do is, a lot of times within Clever, sometimes it's not working. The icons, the students press on, they're getting an error message. So a lot of times what we recommend is what's called clearing the cache, the history and the app data. Basically, what that is, is just going into the settings in the Chromebook and then you're clearing everything that was stored in there and kind of making it start fresh. So what you would do on your student's Chromebook is up in the right-hand corner, you'll see three dots. So the three dots are basically where the settings are at. So if you click on the three dots and then it has all these different options that you can do, we're going to come all the way down to Settings and then click on Settings. And then what this is going to do on your student's Chromebook is it's going to bring up all the Settings menu. So the first thing I wanted to do was to let you know that within the Settings on the Chromebook, the students are able to change their backgrounds, not right now because we had pushed out a background. But there's little things as a parent that you can kind of go through on here and see. So what we're going to do is we want to clear the browsing data. And so right here under Privacy and Security is Clear the Browsing Data. So you're going to click there and then you'll see under Sabrina's is at the top in blue, you see Basic. And then there's also Advanced. So what you want to make sure is in both of these, that all the boxes that you can check are checked. So normally you'll see some of these that are unchecked. You want to make sure that you check each one. And then same thing with the Advanced. When you go in, you'll see all these different options of the browsing history. So even site settings, you would click on. And then you want to make sure, because a lot of times the default for the time range is usually set to last hour. You want to make sure that, that you bring down the dropdown menu and it's going to be for all time. So you want to make sure that you're wiping out everything with the cookies and the history, that everything's going to get basically erased. So I know I don't want to clear out all of Sabrina's stuff. But then what you would do at the end is you would come here to Clear Data and you would click on it. And then it's going to clear all the data and everything in case your, your students having trouble logging in to a lot of the sites that they normally do. And then this will kind of wipe it clean and that the students can start over. And, and that usually is one of the easiest troubleshoots that you can do with your students if they are having those troubles logging in. And then after, if you do that, if there's still issues, then we recommend, just like in the Family Guide, is that you call that technical support number, the, the district number 397-4800. And then the extension is 23780. And then you'll be connected to the proper IT person that can kind of walk you through some more steps and help you out. And then of course, if it's still not working, then you probably have to turn in the device and get a loaner device using our drive-through. And so that was one of the options that we created in EdTech and for the district is to make sure that you as parents and the students have those options. If, if devices weren't working, that you can swap them out. So a student will always have a device, which we wanted to make sure we did that. I think basically that's it for us. So I'll throw it back to Dr. Harper.
Thank you so much for sharing. We certainly appreciate you taking us up to date. I had a couple of questions that I believe are relative to this particular presentation. There was a question regarding internet safety and security. And I know you addressed the YouTube access during the instructional day. And I know we did a presentation previously regarding safety. The question is whether we have additional steps or layers in place when students are zooming in terms of their classes or Google Classroom or just the access that students have to our Chromebooks, whether there are specific protocols in place or security processes in place that parents could be made aware of.
So we've gotten the question before, do I have to use the district-provided Chromebook or can I use my own device? And this is just a reminder of, securely, that is a filter that is on the students' Chromebooks and the students cannot take it off. If a student's using their own personal device, then we can't control or monitor or filter what the student has access to on the internet. So we really want to encourage parents to use the student device as much as possible. And I'm going to go ahead and let Mike chime in as well.
Yes. And so like we had talked about being compliant, that we want to make sure that the district and that the students are safe and that we do have internet safety. So the teachers do teach units. They're going to be doing two for each quarter. So a total of, depending on the grade level, anywhere from six to seven of those internet safety. And so students are also going to be learning, you know, what, what not to do, what to do on the internet. So we wanted to make sure that each year they do this. And so this year we've increased it to spread it out throughout the whole year. So those students know, you know, if they're on a device that's not theirs, if they're on a phone or something like that, that they know, they know the proper digital citizenship also to, to use it that way.
I just want to mention also, in addition, YouTube has a education filter that we also have turned on. And there are certain categories that we don't allow students to go to. So we have that additional filter on YouTube.
Thank you for sharing that. And I think that's just a critical component that has been a more frequent question since we've started the distance learning. So thank you to our EdTech team. I don't see additional questions at this time for EdTech. So I want to thank you for participating this afternoon. And we're going to shift over now to Dr. Mark Main and Jody Ruby regarding our Health Services Department. Again, thanks, EdTech. We appreciate your help and ongoing support. Dr. Main, you're on mute, sir.
We'll start over again. Thank you, Dr. Wachs Harper. Michael, Sabrina and Ellen, as always, the Instructional Technology or Ed Technology Team done an amazing job with all of this, having once been a part of that. Just, just really impressive. Good afternoon, Mr. Martinez. I see Mr. Unaka, Ms. Suentes. Staff and parents, thank you for the opportunity today for, for both Jody and I to share with you some updates around student health and wellness. We're really at a point now in COVID-19, since we adjourned on March 13th, where we've seen over 4,400 cases in Pomona of COVID-19. That brings us at a rate of about 2,863 plus or minus. That was Friday's data. For a, a rate of about 3% infection within the community or a total. When they say sometimes you can look at the actual exposure rate in there and it's about 15% of the population may have experienced COVID-19, which also means that a lot of people have been very ill. And unfortunately, we've lost friends, family members. And, and you know, it's a very tragic time for us. So our thoughts and prayers are with those families and those that have been impacted by this COVID-19 infection. But that said, and I don't want it to be a downer, we're really doing what we need to do right now as a community. And that's practicing the three Cs. We're in a point where we're avoiding crowded places. We're avoiding the components of crowds and confined spaces, which is really critical. I know you're all working on wearing your face mask when you're in public or in an open space and hand washing, of course. All of those things that we know, including physical distancing, that are going to keep us well during this time. Many of those things are being worked on by our schools now so that when students return, we'll be in compliance with the Order of the Health Officer, the COVID-19 Compliance Plan for schools. And we're building various trainings and whatnot to ensure that all of the protocols are in place. I talked a little bit about the data. We also want to cover the other three Cs, which is to contain the virus, which is doing all those things that we know that slow and stop the spread, which is having a positive impact. We're seeing a decrease of 25% in LA County in hospitalizations, which is, which is a big decrease. And certainly ICU admissions are down as well. So that's moving in the right direction. We want to comply with the Order of the Health Officer. That's extremely important that we do our part to help stop the spread and helping others from being infected and collaborate. Share the best practices with others. Remind folks when you see them without a mask in public when appropriate. Help others understand the importance of hand washing with soap and water, which is the preferred method. And it, it's helpful for folks to know what six feet looks like. That's a full bicycle distance between you and me. Or it's two dogs, your dog and my dog knows to nose and tails on our thighs so that we're separate. Some people are having a hard time measuring that out. So those are things that we can all do to remind each other. When it comes to wellness right now, we, we really want to ensure that our students and the families are getting their vaccinations. And it's important to understand that those TK children, new enrollments to our school district and those kiddos moving from sixth grade to seventh grade have all of their vaccinations as required by the state of California and the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health for school attendance. And I know we're in a distance learning mode and I've spoken to a number of parents who are really concerned about seeing their doctor or going to a clinic to get those vaccinations. It is a concern. However, we know that whether it's Kaiser or East Valley Community Health Center or any of the other locations, they're taking every precaution to protect the, the child and themselves from the spread of COVID-19. What we don't want to do is we don't want to have a situation where we have a measles outbreak or a whooping cough. That's what the T-DAP vaccination covers, including diptheria, covers pertussis. And that's something that could be an extremely contagious virus and can be fatal to some babies. So it's something we really want to promote. We'll be calling and reminding and providing referral assistance for those pieces. A really important wellness component. I know when we talk about vaccinations, there are concerns that folks have. Speak to your doctor, find out if there are any reasons medically that you would be exempt. But as you probably know, there are very few exemptions being extended under the law because they actually tighten things up at the state level this year regarding that. When it also comes to vaccinations, we're hearing that those that have Kaiser insurance and others may begin to see the opportunity to get their flu vaccination in the beginning of September. We're hearing September 1st for Kaiser. I don't have an official communication on that. But also others will be able to start providing the flu vaccine. And that's going to be really important this year to consider the flu vaccine for yourself and your family. Because what we want to do is mitigate or minimize the number of symptoms that could be related to COVID that might be flu. And if we're able to protect the community from the flu virus or minimize that, it'll reduce the impact on our healthcare system, especially our hospitals. Because the influenza virus is a respiratory virus too. And unfortunately, when people get sick, they get very sick with the pneumonia that goes with that, just like COVID. So that's something to be aware of. Also, this is the one that I better remind folks so often. Mosquitoes, mosquitoes, mosquitoes. Mosquitoes right now are a problem all through our community. And if you can see this little bottle cap from a plastic bottle, that's all it takes for a mosquito to lay their eggs and begin to replicate. If you have plants with saucers underneath them, you got to remove those or remove the water whenever you use that because mosquitoes will breed there. And right now, we know that West Nile virus is a concern of public health. And also the issues associated with the AIDS mosquito that carries other viruses. So let's make sure that we're keeping an eye out for that because it can cause an illness, which can cause symptoms, which then may lead you to think you've got COVID, which we want to avoid with that. So with that said, we want to move towards some of the resources that we're working on with our community. I mentioned the Kaiser. Kaiser is going to be working with us this fall to provide a vaccination clinics for influenza. We've been talking to Kaiser as well as public health about trying to get additional testing available in our community and within our schools, school community, I should say. Right now, East Valley has testing, so does the, through the Fairplex, through Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. We're working on that. So those are just some of the major pieces that we wanted to cover today. I didn't have any really fancy technology tools like Michael or Sabrina. But we, we do have information. We've had completed some research and provided some information to our school sites. Our health assistants and school nurses are working at the schools. Some are working remotely and some are at the school sites, get things ready for when students return. So in a nutshell, that's kind of where things are at right now, Dr. Wachs Harper. We have some questions.
Thank you. There was a specific question regarding what does it look like for schools to reopen? From a health services perspective, what are some of the markers that we look for?
Oh, for when, when school reopens, first and foremost, what we want to do is ensure that parents are aware to keep their child home if their child's not feeling well. That means not necessarily giving them Tylenol and say, "If you feel okay, go to school." We don't want them to be screened upon arrival, which we will do a screening. That's the first thing that will happen. We'll ask a series of questions that are related to COVID-19. You know, shortness of breath, headache, nausea. Certainly we'll be checking, as feasible, we'll be checking temperatures. So that'll be the first filter. So the first, most important thing is our parent partner is working to ensure that children are staying home if they're not feeling well. The second piece will be the health screening that we do upon arrival at the school, ensuring that the students know that they're to stay spread apart, that they're not to congregate together and that we get them through the gates when we're in the hybrid or return to traditional model. So that'll be the first piece. The next piece is when they're in school, we want them to follow all the protocols and routines. There'll be signage up regarding covering their face. Face coverings are required under Governor Newsom's order and local public health order. So those will be required. The district will be able to provide cloth face coverings. They're working through Maintenance and Operations Department and our purchasing department to procure those. So again, signage will be up. There'll be one way in, one way out. If there's a stairwell, there'll be a stairwell up, a stairwell down as marked. And in the classrooms, there'll be physical distancing equal to six feet or more with the face masks. Again, face coverings must be worn pretty much at all times, except when eating. Those kinds of things are allowed. There'll be disinfection. Maintenance and Operations is working to ensure that our custodial teams are disinfecting per the Health Officer order protocols, which will be two to three times a day. And then there'll be deep cleanings in between. Keeping, there'll also be like the drinking fountains aren't going to be available so that we can't do those kinds of things. When it comes to the Health Office, the Health Office is going to be a place where children that are well go to get their medications. So if your child has medications or if your child's a diabetic and needs their blood sugar levels checked, the Health Office is a place where they would go, where well children go to get those support pieces. If a child's not feeling well, they may be sent to be checked at a quarantine room or an isolation room, depending on the symptoms. Again, hopefully, they didn't develop those during the course of the school day. And hopefully, if they weren't feeling well, they were staying home. But if they aren't, that's where they'll be sent to be checked. And then if they aren't, if they have the symptoms of COVID-19 and it's not just asthma related to seasonal allergies, as determined by the school nurse or the health assistant that, or the person that's been trained by staff, they would be sent home and they would need to be picked up right away. And information would be provided to the family in English, Spanish. And I think Mandarin, Mr. Unaka's office has translated those documents for us, where we would provide guidance for the family to seek out testing. And we have information relative to the testing sites for, for COVID-19. But hopefully, if we're careful and we follow the public health guidelines, when we do return to school, we should be able to minimize transmission, if not completely mitigate it. And then if we do have a case, we work very closely with the site COVID-19 Compliance Liaison or a person at the school site dedicated to working with health services, public health and others to ensure that we're able to follow up on those cases and provide information relative to contact. Which is an important component. Everybody knows that if you're contacted, we need to know, the public health needs to know your contacts so they can help mitigate any spread of the virus moving forward. So hope, hope that kind of gives a picture of what things may look like. I know LAUSD had a great big production, a beautiful series of videos as to what the school site will look like when kids return. And those are good illustrations, just what things will look like here.
Dr. Wachs Harper?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if that's what the parent that answered the question. I think Oliver even included some information from the governor's order last month. When a school district can come off that watch list, it's when the county of Los Angeles comes off the watch list. And specifically with the county and with the state of California, the governor's office has been clear on is to open again, schools within LA County. It's when it meets certain thresholds for 14 consecutive days. Including at least 80% ICU beds available. That would be here at Pomona Valley. So there has to be 80% of ICU beds available. A positive test rate of less than 8% and case rates below 10 per 10,000. I know that sounds so complicated, but you, we will know together when we're close. The, the positivity rate is coming down in the county of Los Angeles. But you know, no one has a crystal ball on when that's going to be. You know, we're going to get to that point where the county is going to be released from being on this watch list. San Diego, I think right now, is going through a vetting process to determine if they're, if they haven't already, and I haven't kept up with the news today, if the county of if they haven't already, and I haven't kept up with the news today, if the county of San Diego was going to be allowed to come off that watch list. So that's what we're, you know, it's not up to the board or it's not up to me or the mayor of the city. It's really, these numbers are very clear. The science is going to kind of guide the direction that we take as a district and as a county.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Martinez. And I do believe Santa Cruz got off the list today for the governor, but San Diego maybe tomorrow. But I know our numbers in LA County are a little different and yeah.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Thank you, Dr. Main, and to your team for sharing this information with us. Had a couple of questions that came in, and one of the questions is also related to what Mr. Martinez shared. It was, are we returning within this calendar year? And I think that the response Mr. Martinez gave in terms of looking at the metrics and working with Department of Public Health, you know, we'll make those determinations within the context of the health information within the county, within our community. So that's the best answer that we have at this time. But know that those decisions are made in conjunction with our health department and with the rates of infection and so forth within our county. So as soon as we have the information regarding a change in status to reopen schools, we will make sure that you have that in real time because we do understand that this preparation that needs to happen within each family in order for students to return to campus. I also received a question, and I will address it, but Dr. Main, if I miss something, please fill in. The question is, what do we do if a student refuses to wear a face mask? And so that would be part of our reopening school strategy. It's an opportunity for a conversation, first of all, because this is about keeping everyone safe. So we would, at that particular school site, want to follow up immediately before the student is coming into a classroom. We would want to follow up immediately with the family to find out, are there some particular circumstances that we're not aware of? And so that we can address that on an individual basis. It will not change our efforts to protect all students and staff. We would just need to follow up immediately within that student and family to address it. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Dr. Main?
No, that's, that's great. Thank you.
And then the also, I also had a question regarding school start times and if those will change. We have a couple of phases. For example, we're now on distance learning, but then when we reopen, we would transition to our cohorts or our groups of students coming in at different times and also different days, depending on the grade level. So those will be determined as we enter the different phases. Mrs. Fuentes, I don't know if you wanted to share anything regarding schedules for students? The question was specifically around kinders, but I think it's more of a general look of what it would look like when we transition to the cohort groups on campus.
We would be sharing those schedules, the cohort A and B models when we go back. So we have those, we share them at the town hall. I don't have them in front of me, so, but we can go ahead and bring those back as we, we would be sharing those with parents so that they would have a review of the times because, you know, breakfast and grab and go and all those specifics. So, you know, as we move towards that, we'll know way ahead of time that we're going to go to a hybrid model. We would bring out those schedules again. And then we also have where some families may need to stay on the distance learning platform, so what that would look like. So again, many things to bring back and circle back on to share with parents.
Thank you. And then we have a question regarding the distance learning schedule. I know that the questions regarding, we're starting the distance learning 8:50, so this will be elementary, and it says 8:50 AM to 3 o'clock, but we have different time sections for Zoom sessions. Is there a specific amount of time that teachers are required to have interaction with the students?
So they're supposed to have live interaction every day. We have to have specific minutes per the contract and the state regulations. So each teacher, and it depends if that's a question for middle or high school, but there is live interaction daily in different subjects. But then the teacher can assign work that the students would do independently within that, if in fact, they're doing a breakout room. So the schedules have all been set. It depends on the site. If it's elementary, middle, and high school, I would check with your principal or the teacher. They have had quite a few meetings with parents just to go over the schedules and how it would work, what student work is independent and how they upload that information. But again, 180 minutes for our students, but then some of the work that they do independently is, has value of the amount of time that they're using. Because kids and adults, it's hard to Zoom from 8:50 or 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock. That's too many hours with them, especially with the little kids. So in there, there's independent work time that the student can go offline work and then come back with the teacher. But know that the teacher interacts with the student on a daily basis. That's very different from the springtime.
Thank you very much. Dr. Main, question about the protocols, if we find that a student has tested positive for COVID, this, of course, is when we return to campus.
Right, yeah, assuming that, you know, when that happens and then, you know, we're keeping our fingers that that doesn't happen, of course, because what that does is it alerts the system. We look at any possible contacts that the student may have had. If there were any close contacts, that would be somebody that would be within six feet of that individual for more than 15 minutes unmasked. But most importantly, we work across the system and we're going to be contacting public health if there's one case to let them know. We're going to be monitoring subsequent cases to ensure that there's not an outbreak. But we're going to work with the family and we're going to, I think the most important thing, you know, parents should know is that we're going to provide you with information and guidance as to what a quarantine looks like, what an isolation looks like, how, what support and resources through our student and family resource center has, or family and student resource center, so that we can help during that time of COVID-19. Certainly, each case is going to be unique, but we want to ensure that we're able to, you know, find the resources available in the community to support that individual. Is the ultimate goal is to keep kids in school attendance high and to, you know, protect the health of everybody. And that's why I promote the flu vaccine every year. This is nothing new. Everybody knows I'm the flu guy, that kind of thing. But also vaccinations for K-12 school enrollment are critical. And so this is one more tool that we have. Right now, our best vaccination against COVID is face masks, physical distancing, hand washing, and, you know, really contact tracing if somebody is sick and working with our public health partners or our health assistants and school nurses and others to ensure the safety of all staff and students.
Thank you, Dr. Main. This question says, are our numbers for COVID because Pomona Valley? I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure I asked the correct question. Is it, are our numbers related to Pomona Valley as a whole? Is it related to the number of people who live in the city? Or is it more of a county type of issue as far as determining the numbers?
That's a great question.
Good, Mark.
Oh, you got, okay, let's see, we'll.
I want to hear you first.
Okay. So as I understand it, when I look at the city of Pomona numbers, those are for the city of Pomona numbers. And on Friday, that number was 44.65 cents they first started keeping numbers back in March or whenever our first case was. But there also is an unincorporated area of Pomona which could be added to that. So those numbers are for the city of Pomona and for the unincorporated area, as I understand it. We also have numbers for Diamond Bar as well, which is a separate, because Diamond Bar is served by a number of different school districts. One of the things that's going to be coming up, once the state gets their test reporting system numbers corrected, because as you may have heard, there was a testing challenge with their system. Once the county has the correct data, they're going to break that out by school districts. So we'll actually be able to see our data, our Pomona Unified School District, which incorporates both Pomona and Diamond Bar, which will help us to better understand what's happening in our community. At this time, you know, we're a part of a very big county that's surrounded on three sides by three other counties. So our data, though, is, from what I understand, our data. Mr. Martinez, is that?
I couldn't have done any better, Dr. Main. Thank you very much.
It's a, it's a moving target.
It is.
Thank you both for sharing that information. The other question we have, actually, this is an offer. We love to get offers as well. Parents are asking what they can do within the distance learning model to provide support for the school. If at the district level, the school level, is there anything that we would like in terms of parent support? And so we appreciate that question. I'm going to tackle it first and say that what you're doing in terms of supporting your child at home with distance learning is the best and most that you can possibly do. So we certainly appreciate that. We appreciate the energy and the effort it has taken to set aside time for your student, a place for him or her to learn, supporting the technology and just being that resource for us. Another way that's really helpful for us as a system is your feedback. These town hall meetings have given us a lot of good information and also the information that you share with your students, teacher, as well as principal, letting us know, let us know how we're doing. Let us know how it's working for your child. That's really helpful. And then also with your particular school, yes, do reach out. Reach out to your teacher and say, you know, is there anything I can do? We realize it's distance learning, but you may have some ideas that we haven't thought about, and we just want to continue to get better in our service for your child. So please communicate any offers that you have, and we certainly appreciate that you have the space to think about how you can help us as we work through this unique set of circumstances. So thank you for that. I don't know if anyone else wants to add to that response.
Yes, Dr. Walks Harper. One thing that our community does so well is help us understand our neighbors and understand those that live around us. Some of our people don't have phones and they don't have a way to communicate with us. They don't have internet, so they have no way of receiving information. Some may not have an address. And so I want to make sure that you, as ambassadors of Pomona Unified, our parents, just keep an eye on your neighbors, those that live around you. If you hear that they may not have connectivity, you have the phone number. It's been placed in the, in the chat area. You have those numbers that you can have them contact us. You could have us contact them on, on your behalf. If you know they may not be able to follow up with us, let us know so that we can reach out to them. But you are going to make, you're that bridge to your neighbors. You're that bridge. That includes Garlandas Markets, that includes all the local places where we do business. If you hear that from a parent, I'm counting on you to serve as those ambassadors of Pomona Unified School District. I, I know you do this so well, and we don't have those parent lead meetings, not the way we had it before, but that's where we got a lot of information and we took it out to our community. So we're asking you to do this. This is where it's so critical that you do that for us so we can reach out to them or they can reach out to us. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Mrs. Fuentes?
Indeed. I just wanted to share that one of the things that we'll be rolling out in the next two weeks is assessments for your children. So if you're in kindergarten, you'll be seeing assessments like ESGI. We want to make sure what do they know in regards to letters and numbers and sounds? And so we'll be seeing those. We'll also be seeing tests in for our elementary students. This will help us in regards to the breakouts, in regards to putting interventions into place for our students. So those tests are going to be across the system, whether they're taking achieve in the middle school and high school. If the students could really make sure that if you can help us to help them understand that this helps us and the teachers to how to help them best and what is, what do they need, whether it's in math, in language arts? And so I know that those are coming. You'll be seeing those coming with, with our teachers doing those in a different way. But we want to make sure that we take that information in the next two weeks to build out our programs for support, whether your child is very high academic and needs that extra enrichment. And then for students that may need, you know, some support to master those letters and those sounds at the, at the early grades, or just regular students that may need some support with homework, that maybe they didn't understand the concept. So that'll be coming in the next two weeks here as we are entering our second week of school. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Our next question has to do with the food service and whether we can increase the time that meals are being served. So I wanted to share initially that we received that request, and that is the reason that we changed our service start to 7:00 AM instead of 7:30. So we did add another half an hour because when you look at the distance learning schedule for secondary, they start online at 8 o'clock. And so we wanted to provide a full hour prior to the start of instruction so that those students would have a greater opportunity to pick up the meals. We did not change the end time. We didn't go 7 to 9. We kept the 9:30 end time that we have had from the beginning of the food service. The other thing that's happening with food services is we're working to expand the number of sites. By the end of August, we will have added three additional sites, and we will add another three sites in September. What we want to be cautious of is that we are working in cohorts of staff to provide meals because we also want to be cognizant of the fact that if we had a COVID case, we don't want our food services staff to go, you know, to not be able to provide the service. So we work in groups and then our staff, when we finish at 9:30, they have to get back to the warehouse to prep the meals. They are prepping thousands of meals for those drop-off areas. So we want to make sure that when we open at 7 o'clock, we can provide enough meals for everyone who's coming through, and that 9:30 end time does allow our staff then to ready the meals. They're packing double the amount. So the distribution, because it's a breakfast and a lunch, there's a double amount that they have to prep for when they get back to the warehouse area. So I do want to share that. And I want to thank you for the feedback because that's why we increased the service time from two hours to two and a half hours. And we'll continue to look at this as we go forward in this distance learning format. So thank you for sharing that. Another question has to do with census. We know that we're challenged as a city and in our particular county for the census counts. We do have many of our sites that have already been identified by the county as hard-to-count areas. And so we continue to push that information out to our sites. We know how critical it is to the services for our cities, specifically also to our students and families. So we will continue to push that information out. I'll also follow up. I know Mr. Unaka is here. We've sent some things out as a district, and we'll look at if there's some additional items that we can do to spur the energy. We know it's a challenging time, but we do want to make sure that everyone is counted for the census so that the funding that's needed for our city will be approved at the government level. There's a question around positive COVID. If, so if a student tests positive, will the students, let's say that student is in a classroom, will all the students in that classroom be required to be tested, Dr. Main?
I may have Jody Ruby chime in here, but it all varies. Public health would tell us who needs to be tested based on the information that we provide them. Initially, what we'll do is we'll be talking to the teacher and looking at the placement of the students in the classroom to try to determine if there were any close contacts, any unmasked opportunities where, you know, a student might have been coughing or something and pushing out droplets. So those are going to be part of our initial investigation to determine whether or not, public health would determine whether or not there needed to be additional testing. So each situation, like I had mentioned before, is going to be unique. We're hopeful that if we're practicing the physical distancing and children are wearing their face coverings, and we're providing those constant reminders regarding hand washing, not touching the face and whatnot, that, you know, we won't have those close contact situations and that we can minimize the number of students that might be placed on quarantine. Again, I think it's really important to know that for the reopening of schools, we're going to have to pass those metrics that Mr. Martinez discussed. So the cases are going to have to come way down, our positivity rate has to come down so that public health says now it is safe to reopen schools. And then we'll follow those protocols. And I do anticipate the protocols as issued by public health will be refined, as they have shared with us as they're learning much as about the virus as they go forward. So we're going to be learning with them side by side. Hope that answers the question. It's a good question.
Thank you so much, Dr. Main. A question for Adtech around the Remind app. We know that we have it system-wide, and the question is just some basics on how does it work and what are some of the tips that would help parents to navigate the Remind app?
I know we're still kind of building that out for the parents. We've gotten together with Teresa to do some of those parent trainings, and so I know that. and so I know that a Remind will be coming up in the near future.
So once we have that training set up, we'll add that to our parent calendar, and we'll also add it with our school sites. I think you'll see some more information with your principals as they're sharing about the Remind app. We're really thrilled to have it. We know that it's worked very well for us in the past. So we will add some more information and have subsequent trainings for that. I had a question about which schools are being added for food distribution. I knew I was going to get that question. We are still figuring that out. What we're trying to make sure is that we cover our district system. So we're looking at each cluster area of schools, we're looking at elementary, middle, high schools. We're also looking at accessibility, which campuses work really best in terms of safety for a pull-through distribution of food. So I apologize, I don't have the names yet, but you will have that information before the sites open. And so again, that'll be three more before the end of August, and then we'll add another three in September. So please know that that's coming, and I'll ask Mr. Yanaka to help us blast that information out as soon as we have those sites named. I don't see additional questions in the queue at this time. So I wanted to add some additional information. We have been thrilled as a district to offer the town halls to you to keep that bridge of communication and connection. We're looking at our next steps. We know that many of you have meetings now. All of you have had some communication and ongoing connection with your school sites through the distance learning that has begun. And so we're looking at making this more of a check-in on either a monthly or a quarter basis. And so we want to see what will work best for you and what will work best just overall as a community. We don't want to necessarily duplicate the efforts of the school sites. We don't want to bombard you, thinking that you have to go to this meeting and that meeting. And of course, with our parent university calendar, you will see that we have daily trainings ongoing. We take your feedback as we design those courses. So we will share a next step. It will likely be September or possibly October 12th, which would be the end of, the ninth would be the end of the first quarter. And so possibly that Monday, the 12th, we would do a town hall check-in, maybe give you an opportunity to ask some questions ahead of time, and we can know who to have here, present at the town hall to address any specific questions. So we will shift from the weekly Monday, Wednesday format, and we will share some information about our next town hall meeting. This is actually number 12. So again, we've been thrilled to have this opportunity. We thank you for the participation. The participation has been tremendous, starting in the thousands and still even today, well over 100. And so we want to thank you for the time that you've spent with us. We hope the information has been helpful as we begin this new way of learning. We thank you for your support. We appreciate all of the information that you've shared with us as a community. I'm going to just check one more time to make sure I haven't missed any additional questions. I don't see any at this time. I want to also thank the people that you don't see. There is an entire team from community schools to people in community services, in addition to our presenters who make these meetings happen. It takes several folks, and of course, you know, we have Terry in the room, they're translating for us, and she does an amazing job with the simultaneous translation, which has really allowed us to be effective. Julie and Crystal and Davina and Melissa with sending the questions out into the queue. Sony in the office with setting everything up, setting up the webinars, bugging all of us to make sure that we're on time, so that we can start on time. Thank you so much. So at this time, we will close for today. We will share again information out to you with the follow-up town hall, but we thank you for the opportunity and for all of the wonderful feedback. Have a wonderful school year, and please stay connected with us, so that we can help make this the best year possible for your children. Again, thank you. Mr. Martinez, would you like to close us out, sir?
Just want to thank you, Dr. Kristana Walks Harper, for your leadership. She makes it sound like she's not going to do this again. You're, when you hear about parent leads, that's what Diane, that's what Kristana leads, Diana and Maria, support that, Maria Garcia. So we're going to be seeing a lot of Dr. Walks Harper. I believe she has scheduled an update here in the next probably month and a half or so. We're going to come together as a group with parents, and we'll be seeing our faces in all your meetings with your principals. So Dr. Walks Harper, you can't get away that easily. You are going to be on here throughout the year, because you do it so well with this entire team. So again, thanks again from behalf of the Board of Education, on behalf of the administration here in the district office and across the system, Dr. Walks Harper, Oliver Yanaka, and the entire team for making this work so seamlessly. Appreciate it. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you, parents. Thank you so much.